I think it's really forward thinking, our commitment to Green for thinking in that way. Information means a lot in our community, not only in the black community, but all over the city of Lake City. So I think it makes good sense that if there's an opportunity to put up a digital sign, not just to advertise animated Saturday Jerry Park, but to talk about what's going on in the city. If you recall, all you can recall a time the city of Lake City Police Department put up signs saying, don't drink and drive, or this event is taking place, be careful with the chief, or whatever. And the same thing with the Sheriff's Department. And those signs are a way to communicate with the public that the city is not doing that well as raised to their website or any other way. So I think that a digital sign would make sense there because of the traffic. And I think the comparison with there and Wilson Park is like apples and oranges. There's not a whole lot, people go to Wilson Park where they got a purpose to go there. People drive down Marion Street, going to work, going to City Hall, going to the V Hospital, going wherever. So the traffic suggests that it makes sense. And so I would think that that would be the first digital sign and the city might want to consider putting digital signs somewhere else, like on US 90 or further south on Marion Street. It just makes sense to me and I really, I committed this agreement for that kind of vision. Because I can tell you now that that's a visionary way of looking at how you're going to communicate with the public and to assume that people are going to read the newspaper, going to go to the city website, that's just not happening. So if you want to communicate with the public, you need to do it in a public setting and a public way. So that would make sense and I'm sure that the police chief or the sheriff will tell you that those signs they put up make sometime, it caused people to avoid those traffic stops, they've been drinking and driving, but at least they get the message. So I would encourage the city, as you move forward, that seriously consider positive opinion as relates to the digital sign. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I think the council was all in favor of the sign, it's just a matter of we can't approve it until we know what the cost is.
Okay, that, like I said, I did miss some of the discussions, so I apologize, but they sound good to me.
Or we just don't have a finite number, like I said, if we do, it's out there or whatever. But anyway, I think the council doesn't want to review it.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any comments related to this resolution 2021-015? If not, then Mr. Mayor, I will give you that by time.
City Council Resolution Number 2021-015 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of the continuing contract for professional architectural services with Visero Associates LLC, related to construction of new city home complex and West Side Blair Station, authorizing the execution of Task assignment number one relating to the continuing contract and providing for an effective payment.
Thank you. Your question has the same answer as the resolution 2021-015.
Mr. Mayor, I approve the resolution number 2021-015.
The resolution I seconded is best by town. Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. No?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so at this time, we have a presentation.
Do you want to use the clicker?
Sure.
I think it'll work that range. Left or right button depending.
Question number one, Justin Marrow, Pastor Associates here presents the option discussion. So just a basic overview, we have four options. There are several sites in play for you guys to consider and provide recommendations on how to proceed. The first option would be a full new build at 401 North Marion Street. And option two would be involve utilization of the Girls Club, the Columbia County Bank, and Newville on Marion as well. Option three would be the Girls Club and Newville. And option four would be the Girls Club, Columbia County Bank, the St. Effa Theater, and Newville as well. We'll get some questions and answers after that. So the first slide here, I just want to give you guys an image of where all these sites are in the city. Site one is your current existing city hall. Two is the vacant property on 401 Marion Street. Three is the Girls Club. Four and five are, five is the vacant site next to the Columbia County Bank. Four is the existing Columbia County Bank. And six is the historic downtown bank. The next few slides are some images of those existing sites and what they say today. And 401 North Marion Street is where Newville would occur in all options. And also the vacant site was on the corners of Leon and Franklin with Marion. And you have some signage and some street names there, kind of the rest of the site is vacant. Girls Club will be part of some of these options. Just some images inside and the exterior, some buildings there. So the Girls Club, there would be renovations to, all existing buildings located on the same site. Columbia County Bank, built about 1950s. It's in good shape, we have some images of the outside and the inside as well there. That would be involved in two of the options. And then Historic Bank is in fourth option, which would have plenty of money there as well. So there's a couple images of the inside and outside of that property. Option one involves a full new build, located in City Hall to 401 North Marion Street on that vacant property north of the current location of City Hall. Here's a potential layout for that new city hall. All departments would be in the same building, about 70,500 square feet. We have our parking lot separated between Hernando Street and either side of your industry. You have the building and parking as well as parking on the parcel to the other side of Hernando. Probable range about five to fifteen half million for a full new build and development of those two properties. Option two, we start to utilize some existing properties. There'd be a smaller new bill located as a vacant site, utilization of the Columbia County Bank and the Girls Club. So the new bill at Columbia County, the new bill at Marion Street would be approximately 7200 square feet. Consists of council chambers, clerk offices, conference room, administration, and parking for block proximity of the cars. The Girls Club, and this recurs in all utilization, the Girls Club would likely be for IT, HR, procurement, finance, and some trainings. Columbia County Bank would be for customer service and group management, apartments likely ranging from four to five million dollars. So just a quick graphic on the Girls Club and how that space may allow, as well as the square footage associated with each department, the space that we have for their use.
That's me, the people online couldn't see it.
Great.
Um, yeah, you can keep going.
So the next image is the Columbia County Bank for customer service and group management. And the existing building has an existing drive-through, so it lends itself well for customer service. And it also has an existing lobby counter which could be utilized for customer service and group management. There wouldn't have to be a lot of renovations to that building. Those apartments can move in there basically day one.
It's not working anymore? Obviously, for you.
So the graphic of the potential new bill, 7200 square feet. You have the council chambers, clerk offices, some public space lobby, and administrative offices in this direction as it goes forward.
Is it working again?
Yeah, it looks like it is. So option three, we would utilize a new bill, about 10,000 square feet at the vacant site and the Girls Club. 10,000 square foot new bill will consist primarily of council chambers, clerk offices, conference room, administration, public service, management, and parking. Girls Club will be the city HR, IT, finance, and training, likely ranging from three point seven to four point seven million. On the new bill, we would add the customer service and the group management. Option four, we add in, from option two, we add the historic building. So you have the smallest new city hall, about 500 to 500 square feet. In that building, you would just have clerk, council chambers, and Girls Club, IT, HR, procurement, finance, training, and Columbia County Bank would stay with the customer service and group management. The Startup Bank would be a micro location for administration offices, probable range four point four to five point six million. A new bill would just be the center pole with the clerk offices, council chambers, lobby space. And then there again, the Girls Club, Columbia County Bank, City Hall. And then just, you have the wide open floor plan for the existing bank utilized for administrative offices. Just some of the costs. Four for each option there for you. And obviously, the education departments can be here and change. It's one way of laying them out, which each department will be located in. Any questions?
Questions I can ask?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I have a comment. I know that we've looked at the bank property and there's other people looking at. I thought we might be discussing action on here as it says on the agenda, but there's a possibility. I think that worked out a fairly good purchase agreement. But I think timeliness is of the nature when you're dealing with real estate. Because as long as something's on the market, it's available for anybody to buy. To me, the purchase amount that he's negotiating is less than they were asking for just the one building to begin with. And I think it would be a disservice to the taxpayer if we didn't report on at least procuring that property regardless of the plan. Because the finished base that's available and that, that piece from the map from Marion over to Maine, this is not going to be available, you know, long. The one building's not been available ever in the life of the building. And it's a unique opportunity. I mean, we missed out on the Bank of America building, which would have been ideal several years ago and would have taken care of all the issues. But I think if we hesitate here, there's an opportunity to miss out on knowing that supporting documents that we were given there as a prospective contract. I was just wondering if there is any, I mean, it's on the agenda. Is it possible that we can move forward with something to at least get into the new building space?
Thanks, Mayor Will. My name is Chase Moses, I'm here with Hunt Moses Realty. We are the broker for now Millennium Bank, Columbia, Millennium Bank and their representatives. Asked us to work on that property, a couple of weeks ago, for that property, knowing that the city was in a business space. Opportunity time to approach the bank, for the city to approach the bank directly to see if they had the interest. Obviously, listing information from an initial was confidential, it had not been advertised at that time. But we did, we took the reason, had the opportunity to let the city take a look at it, and we believed space. For the bank, for the city, for the taxpayers, and so that was the opportunity to present it. Obviously, we had to take the representatives of the city to the cities as well, give them a chance to look at it in depth. The bank is open to any other questions or considerations, allowing you to have the diligence to perform those final steps before purchase. And you study, study, and perform, then that can certainly be good. But at this time, obviously, it's now kind of a public thing, but the property seems to be available, so.
Any questions I can ask?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I noticed in the document that you have with you that the bank is willing to leave in the partnership and security system?
That is correct.
And that's from the recent remodel, that's in both buildings, right?
Correct.
The cubicles and everything that we saw in the old bank as well?
Yes.
I mean, to me, that property, I prefer to utilize immediately.
Especially the main branch, the Isaac Building, the branch, it's, it's a starting piece of the building for the space.
Well, I took the two of the building, you know. I think that it would be money well spent to obtain that property.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions, first, Mr. Moses, but I do have some comments. Ask Mr. Moses to stand for all the comments. If anyone else has that question.
I can have a seat here if you need me.
Everybody, appreciate it. Why, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions also for the property. And, you know, one of the things, when you have the four options, one of the disadvantages that we have on the council, we have the four options, we all have an ideal, what we think is best, or that, so what we need to do is obviously discuss it. I can tell you for me, option three is the only viable option for a couple reasons. One reason is that it is the least expensive option for taxpayer. What option three does is it provides the citizens of Lake City all of the services, governmental services, that we provide at the cheapest cost. And so I think that's important. I do recognize as a unique opportunity to obtain the other properties. However, funds are limited and, you know, when you're talking about, you know, where is the money going to come from? I believe we've already done the self-tech on, we find it's acquired about four million dollars. There's only one option here that even when there are budget, everything else exceeds our budget. And so if it exceeds the budget, then we have to have a discussion about where those monies come from. I think the opportunity presented by Mr. Moses is unique. And I would love to see us have the ability to take, take that opportunity. But it does a couple of things. I think number one, I haven't heard where the funds are going to come from. And then number two, also, it takes those properties off the dashboard, so there's ongoing liability as well. So to me, the most affordable way to move forward and provide the government services to the taxpayer and give them the best thing for the tax dollars is option three, which comes in at three point seven to four point seven million. So those are the reasons that I support that option. I'm open to the other options, but I'm concerned about the cost.
Mr. Mayor, I think the numbers aren't as wide as you think. I know our engineers presented this, however, they're using, you read the time print, 2017 building number for new construction. But on the remodel of the bank and option four, they put in 700,000 for a 2,000 square foot building. Now, if you look at the new construction, they're building at 150 square foot. So if you even just modulate that to be similar dollars, you're nowhere near that. You're almost at the same cost on option three and option four. And in addition, I'm a favor option five, which is, don't build anything by the bank property and be here. And maybe later on, we can acquire the theater, which is already set up for meetings. You can meet right there and that, and which may or may not be available, but do we really need a separate meeting space? Long term, I don't know that we build a building for that. And if you do, if you remove that, then that option will be way less expensive, save the taxpayer, and wouldn't spend all the money we're already, we've already borrowed in advance. I think the main issue I have is we went into this project last year. That's at work, so to speak. We borrowed X amount, and then we went to call an engineer, take this amount, build what you can build. And that's never how you should go to build. Normally, you say, we need this square footage to meet this issue, and then you get a design to meet that. Which if they would have done that, they would say that what we really need would cost in a new building, seven, eight million dollars. That's just looking at what the cost of construction is to build a square footage needs. But since we did it the way we did, I think we need to look at the options that's going to be most beneficial to the taxpayer long term. That's why I'm not sure that any of these options are exactly right. Because if you look at the two bank buildings on that end out they gave us, going over to Maine, with that property, it has 87 spaces already in place. That's not 87 square spaces you have to build on 401 North Marion. When you think about that, that saves quite a bit of money right there. And then if you look at that old building, all you need to do to it at the most, I would think, and I think this is correct for talking to Mr. Helfenberger, this wetware out there, is maybe a new roof, and they can use the cubicles just like they are inside. Now, that changes again considerably when you think of that 700,000 and you put on a, I think the roof was 28,000? 35,000? So if you go from a 700,000 to 35,000, now that's a better option price-wise. And I do think price-wise is what we should be looking at. But secondly, we need to be looking at a 50-year plan, not a five-year plan. If we build something now that's not going to meet the needs of the future, then in five years, we'll be building again and looking for more space again. And I think that's not going to be as cost efficient as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
So I agree with a lot of Mr. Sampson's sentiment. I can tell you that I think there were many challenges when we acquired another facility. I think that's why we're in the position we're in right now with having a city hall at all. We acquired a facility that was old and that we found out didn't have, wasn't able to support the larger wind load. And anybody that's made it through this weekend knows how important that is. So there is an advantage to new construction. In addition to new construction, there's also a commitment that we've made to the Lake Shore Hospital Authority to acquire those parcels of land. And we told them in good faith that we intended to build a city hall on that property if they provided it to us. And I think we're obligated of our word to commit to that. So I think, I agree. I think that we do have to do what has been the best interest of the taxpayer, the least expensive option presented. When you have options, it's always tough, but the least expensive option for our taxpayer is option number three. And that provides all the government services. It keeps our commitment and it looks to the future because it allows the future council, if needed, at that time, if the city's in a financial position to have growth in the future. So for me, I'm, option three, I know that there are many other ways that we could do it. I do think that when you acquire an old building, as the historic banks that we talked about, I don't see a lot of value in that. I think it tends to be a lot of building we think about as best, just think about, you know, making it work, bringing it up to code, put power points in. There's a cost there. I do agree with Mr. Sampson on the 2017 numbers. I think it's a very fair point. And so, we have to go with the numbers were presented. And what I would say is, if the numbers are not accurate, we need to recalculate so that we can make that informed decision. But option three is the least expensive to the taxpayer, and that provides the most amount of government services for that dollar, and it keeps our commitment with the Lake Shore Hospital Authority. That's all I want to say.
I have, we were part of both the hours, David, but disagree with the other part. I think this opportunity, the opportunity to buy the bank building would be an opportunity. And I agree with Mr. Sampson on the future, that he's land, parking, things that we need. Because we do need to look down the road. The other thing is, if we buy the bank building, that would be that forever if we don't do it. And it is a finite number, you know what that's a cost to give with construction. It's always a lot, you know, and we don't ever have insurance. And as far as cost, the bottom number on that was four point four, where out of three is three point seven, four point seven, so it could actually be cheaper. And I think all of our, you know, the end range, I got that in one, but but I think we ought to go ahead with the purchase of the property and then look at options around it. I think we do, we did make a commitment to Lake Shore. And I think we do need a council chamber to get on the reservation, I think. That's why I'm in favor of the board. But I think we will need a chamber, but I think opportunities by the property, we should go forward at this time, and then we can figure out.
Mr. Mayor? For anything, any cost that exceeds the amount of money that we budgeted, did Mr. Helfenberger speak to where he is going to acquire those funds? Where are those funds going to come from? Do we have a certain amount of money that we budgeted for the project regardless of the option? So any overage, I would be curious to know where that overage would come from.
Some of the, let's say the site work, for example, some could be delayed. You could possibly park, whether it's the new, whatever site you pick. If there's site work to be done, some of that can be done in force, pound labor, some could be done or delayed. And it is properties that some of them have grass lots that actually can be used for the time being. I would hope that we would go after grant funding for parking, especially with the brownfields. We've been successful at going after that in the past. And we can possibly get some paving done under the grant if there is a concern with underground contamination. And there is all over the downtown, but we need some time to go after these grants. If you have time, we can make it a lot cheaper.
May I ask a question? Mr. Helfenberger, when you were looking at these different projects, was there one that was preferential to staff?
I think the staff, the problem with the option of a full build was that their offices weren't large enough for them. We've been able to spread it out, you have larger offices, and you have ability within these spaces to, let's say you need to do another expansion. The real savings is down the road because you would probably have, well, you could expand a department within a building. what you you could expand a department within a building without having to build another building. Uh, because you wouldn't allow for extra space in the buildings if you were acquired on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So I hear the city manager when he asked about, um, need for additional funds to acquire additional funding. A part of the agreement with the hospital authority, uh, we have a specific timeline to, uh, uh, start, uh, construction, new construction, uh, to maintain those properties, uh, that they, that they gifted to us for lack of a better term. So, uh, we do have a timeline in place that we must meet on the new construction side. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have four years for the city hall. Uh, that has to be done. The rest is not a timeline on it. It's a lot of use for city purpose, county purpose, or public parking. The city hall would have to be done within the four years though, at least, um, some footprint of the city hall in order to be able to keep the lots.
So the opportunity, uh, to acquire the new property, uh, we know is is fleeting. Uh, so there is also a time crunch to that in the four years, my understanding is four years to build the new city hall. Um, so those are the questions that I have. Uh, I'm I'm open to option four, uh, as long as we're able to acquire the additional funds after terms about that. I do think that option three is the best option for the, uh, taxpayers. I would fully support that one. Uh, I would, I would be interested in what my other council members do.
Yeah, well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand Mr. Green, and I agree with him partly with, uh, option three. But like Mr. Sampson, I'm concerned about the future, the future growth. Uh, I don't expect the city staff to get into small. I expect the city to grow. And we're going to have to accommodate them. And I think that option four allows that. And, uh, with option four, if we can acquire both of those buildings at the cost of additional cost of one, and it would allow for growth and expansion, I think. Well, I know it will. And, uh, but I'm not, uh, I understand that option three probably is cheap, but will it meet our needs ten years from now? And, uh, I don't want my children or my grandchildren to have to deal with that, real charged with dealing with that now. And in my opinion, I think, uh, option four, even though it's going to be a little expensive, but, uh, I think option four will be to to our benefit.
May I ask anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Would would that be in the case, is it possible that we could look at, you know, if the board is willing to move forward on that person? Is that something we could look into?
I I think we should move forward with the purchase. And then we've got the ability to do option four or a using a variation of that. And and I think we've got some variations, but I think this is something that we don't do. We need to try to do construction. As Mr. Helfenberger said, you know, build on that lot just for that to buy our people in there to buy now, there is a need.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion that we would proceed with, given the city manager the ability to enter into a contract with the proper due diligence to purchase that property?
Motion through, uh, enter to negotiate the contract and purchase of the bank property to second. Second, and I'm Mr. Bill. Further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Do I understand the motion was to negotiate as opposed to accept?
To accept.
Mr. Mayor, motion to negotiate would be a more motion to accept could not be anywhere because contract is not been noticed for the property.
Can I offer that to negotiate?
Okay. And Mr. Bill second, I'm ready to go. Okay. Any other discussion by count? I miss I could call over.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Bill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, and it's all we can do on that. Where to, uh, first wishes your address, council, I have a couple left. Uh, Ms. May, this is George Dallas.
Don't know enough to ask questions yet.
You went down.
I don't know enough to ask questions yet.
Okay.
Since since we're on planning and zoning and the story, uh, this is really the first introduction I've had to this program.
Okay.
And so I'm, I need, maybe we have copies of the presentations.
Sure.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, and Ms. Andrewy, Ms. Andrewy.
My name is Glenn Andrews. I'm a PD for West Main Street. Uh, I'm going to address the home, the code enforcement amnesty program you had last meeting. Did you pass that, right? Okay. Um, I would like to see the follow up on how the program works, maybe a PowerPoint presentation under old business, maybe the second meeting in May with pictures of all the sites, the code violations and the number of years they've been doing this thing. And then new pictures of the code compliance sites before and after, and praise to the market owners for their participation in this program. Can we put that on the agenda for the second meeting in May?
Uh, I I don't know. Good idea. I'd like to thank you a lot.
Okay. Second is utilities. Uh, I've heard a lot of things. And when you make a large investment, you should have a reasonable idea of when they're going to get the return on the money. The truth is, there is no reason to build a two million gallon a day plant. Oh, at the mega site. I have some experience in this because I was your superintendent at the St. Margaret's for thirteen years. So if, uh, you have, uh, promise to the people out there that you will provide a waste water treatment to them, there's another way to do this. You can put in a, um, holding tank, narrative holding tank. And this will be on their site, collect whatever waste water they have for a particular amount of years. Then you would plan on pumping this tank down daily. You'd have to put them in the service lines and upgrade the lift stations to bring this flow from out that mega site into the St. Margaret's plant. Um, utilities to the waste water run best on an even flow. We never get it. So if you time the pumping down of that variation, that holding tank, to make the way this plant in St. Margaret's between, uh, one and five in the morning, you'd be in the favor to the plant with one better can to handle the flow from that mega plant until the mega site until they are, um, having any flow and really need a waste water right out there. Just another idea. I don't go to community committee meetings and I've not been invited. But, uh, do public people go to community committee meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the third thing is chickens. Years ago, the city passed an ordinance to ban livestock and poultry in the city limit. At that time, John Robinson was on the city council. And he had a given his pot belly pig. He wrote an exception into that ordinance so that he could keep this pig. But my chickens had to go. Now I would like to have a exemption written into that ordinance where you would be allowed to have chickens in the city limits. No roosters, no peacocks, no wild geese, no wild animals, no wild poultry, no cows. But, um, give me my chickens back. Um, and that we have to be, it'd be again, it'd be free range. You have to have so many square feet per chicken to be allowed on your property. And, um, I would really like my girl's hand. Thank you.
Good. Anybody else wish to speak? Everybody else does. We're moving into old business. We have, uh, person of public hearing on city council ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty one seventy five. Anybody wish to speak for or against this ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty one seventy five? And then I wish faithfully to, uh, everyone would you read that.
City council ordinance number two one eight twenty dash twenty one seventy five is an ordinance. This is water is moving by. Now, maybe that was a requirement we have to keep to take advantage of the development and center to apply for and acquire a building permit and defensive instruction of the development prior to the expiration of the development period. Providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Okay, well, first, I would say I go to the adoption of city council ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty one and I'll read into the document, first reading two more twenty twenty.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt city council ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty one seventy five. Second.
There are motion and second, any discussion by count? Mr. Sampson?
Yes. Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Bill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Next, we move into new business. We have one, uh, twenty twenty one that twenty one seven, getting the first reading, Mr. Jefferson, I'm going to do that. Yes, it's called.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty one seventy eight is an ordinance of the city council of the city of New York City, Florida, pending chapter two, article two of the city code of ordinance. Providing for amendments to rules and meetings in the city council and special standing committees. Providing for amendments in composition, functions, and responsibility for various special standing committees. Providing for severability, providing for the repeal of conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
And there are motion that the city council twenty twenty day twenty one seventy eight.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt the ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twenty one seventy eight.
Second.
There are motion and second, is there any discussion by count?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Um, when reviewing this, there are several things in the different sections. In section two thirty two, I know always in the passage requiring three or more council members. I'm wondering why that couldn't require two. Um, if you require three, that's a forum. I wonder if that puts us in jeopardy. Um, it's just a small thing. The same thing with the number of council members on committees in two forty eight. I know, and and maybe this is a question for the attorney, but I'm concerned about having three voting members from this council on a committee when clearly in section two thirty eight, it says that three members of this council is a form of the council. And so I don't know, maybe that'd be a question for the attorney, if that's something that should be altered so that there's only two city council members on the, um, committees rather than three. And the same with requiring a special meeting have two instead of three.
A quorum for a committee is defined as generally one half of the membership of the committee. The city council members are, in essence, the liaison between the city council and the committee. The number of city council members on the committee is, at the council's pleasure, it could be all five, as you just all said, as five members of the CRA, uh, about an hour and a half ago. Or it could be as few as one, or it could be none, as you so choose. It is still the same council option. The numbers that are in there are the numbers that were put in as a result of probably not less than six meetings, two workshops, many, many comments by the over the course. Um, so this, this is a two year working practice.
I understand. I've been at a bunch of those meetings, sitting out there. I wondered when this would pop back up because it's been talked about forever, forever. But but I did have some reservations with that. I just think the number, when you go to two thirty eight, it calls a forum of this council three. And and I understand you're saying that's a different committee. However, we changed the wording here to say the plurality of the council. I'm just concerned about how that.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. I understand. We should have. The warm of this council is semi-staginal, not less than one half of the council, which would be three. Now, the plurality comes up in that if, for example, two members are present, it's not going to work out real well with this small of a committee, but I'll use the two members, two members are present. They cannot conduct any business. But if the plurality chooses, they can adjourn the meeting from time to time in the hopes that a forum will be present when it leaking meetings. By adjourning from time to time, they avoided the necessity of really noticing the color. That also kicks in the possibility where, technically speaking, they can call the sergeant of arms who allow them who, uh, round up council members who happen to be walking around the streets or sitting at the counters in the brushroom, uh, sitting coffee. That's how old some of these rules are. That's where the plurality comes in, making adjourn from time to time.
So nothing in that stops the committees from having three members of the council on the meeting.
As the council directs, the attorney, the power of the meeting, council members, you choose it. You choose it, sir.
Okay, that that's one thing. And then also, um, in two thirty, I'll just cover a couple of them real quick and discuss them and see if we're trying to change in two thirty four or some clarification here on the agenda. And I think it says something about the agenda being timely. But I would like to see the agenda actually be labeled as the wind is going to be out. So that we have the Tuesday before Monday meeting. I know we do that currently, but I guess if we're going to go through this process, maybe we should go ahead and put it in there so we have it. Because in the future, maybe that will change. I do like the change that it used to be six hours prior, which is, uh, a little bit unreasonable when you get six hundred pages.
I thought if you get an ordinance and you can't believe them now, something, you had to have a person be, you'd be unable to speak where we can adopt this ordinance and set a reason. And then we can set rules every month, just like we do with, uh, city council again.
That's a good one. As a matter of fact, I thought under two thirty one, almost all the rules in this ordinance should actually be adopted by resolution by the ordinance.
That way you're not locked.
Yeah. I mean, if there's a way we could just do that instead, I think it makes sense because then you can alter the rules for the need of that specific council that changed over the years. I mean, we've got a lot of things here to fight over the years that, um, while we don't follow, like the, um, wanting to make the presentation to this board and it only happened in a six hour notice to get on the agenda. Well, you can't do that. I mean, there's no way, no one has time to look at it. So if there was a way, maybe the real question is, is there a way to change this so rather than being an ordinance change, we fulfill the ordinance and change the majority of this is by resolution? Um, another quick issue is to move on to those two forty four, the public, um, when it goes to public participation. I had a question I wasn't clear on is, so when they talked about this in a meeting, I'm sitting out there, probably some views and things that were at the other chambers, they talked about having the three minutes for multiple different. You might remember, Mr. May, they talked about having, say, three minutes for whatever item. But the way this is written, it's like it's a, um, in total. So if you want to talk at a public hearing that's here and you wanted to discuss something and it's the way this is written to me, it says three minutes total, unless give an extra time, maybe as a consistency, you would, you would set it up so you would say, you know, three minutes per topic addressed during that meeting, each time you come to the podium. I think that would be cleaner. But again, that's something that can be done by resolution if this ordinance wasn't in place. Um, and then in two forty seven, where it talks about taking people out with the sergeant of arms, it mentions, um, some instructions, but it doesn't mention a warning. And I think a warning is kind of crucial before you start calling people out. And I know we had talked about that a lot in the last meeting, but that's one thing I'd like to see. And then, um, I I think that's most of it. But but the real issue I think is most of this should be resolution and not ordinance. I think we're tying the hands of the council when you do that, and it's not, not a good way.
I think on the agenda, like you said, we want to get out ahead of time, but there could be time, we don't want to put it in order, except we're not getting. And we can just have a policy, we let and then work with that, it's a lot easier to deal with. But the city council should not have to be.
Well, again, I'm just worried about setting up another ordinance if we don't follow like we didn't follow this previously.
I agree.
Which, that's why I'm wondering if there's a way we could just repeal the ordinance, what parts we can, that we don't actually have to have, and then we could pass a resolution to, to fill the gap.
Uh, the only thing I know we could do is, if you got a new person, you may just pay them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe this is the first reading, correct?
Yeah.
So uh, I would, I would keep my motion uh, to support the ordinance. And it's.
The first reading.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I know one of them, one of them's running for here, like Mr. Sampson covered some of the other ones that I had, but on section two thirty nine, where it speaks about the uh, the members to take their place during the meeting, that addresses mainly the uh, the council members, the city clerk, the attorney, and sergeant at home. I would like to see that address also in the city minute. I would like to uh, the city minute to be included in there as well.
Okay.
Are his representatives.
All right, anything else? Ms. Perdery, Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah. Okay, uh, next, city city council ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twenty one eighty two on first reading. The governor would do that by now.
City Council ordinance number twenty one, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty one, twenty one eighty two. Is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, amending the code of the city of Lake City, Florida by adding section two dash one eight four to provide for the procurement of designed building contracts, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for complication, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion that city council ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twenty one eighty two?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to the ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twenty one eighty two. Second.
A motion and second, any discussion back down? Ms. Icree, follow me.
Yes.
Should that ordinance be twenty one eighty two or twenty one eighty three? This, this has here. Both, twenty one eighty two and twenty one eighty.
Yes.
Same as the tackle. Number seven.
We were doing twenty one eighty two.
Okay.
Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah. Next, we'll get the city council ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twenty one eighty three on first reading. Mr. Brown, would you read that by now?
Ordinance twenty twenty one, twenty one eighty three is an ordinance of the city of Lake City, Florida, relating to unlawful activities given public areas and right of ways. Amending chapter ninety eight of the city of Lake City Code to further prohibit activities that interfere with public safety and the primary purpose of public facilities and rights away. Providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for complication, and providing for effective date.
Is there a motion that city council resolution twenty twenty one is twenty one eighty three?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, pass ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twenty one eighty three.
Second.
That motion and second, any discussion back down? Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah. Next, we're moving to resolution, our maybe the city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one three, Mr. Brown, would you read that by now?
Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one three is a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of the change orders in the contract between the city and SGS Contract Services Incorporated, relating to the replacement of the existing grid system at St. Marcus Waste Water Facility, extending the budget provision made to the insurance windows and additional cost not to exceed two hundred sixty eight thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Is there a motion that city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one three?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to the adoption of resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one three.
And a motion and a second, any discussion back down? Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Next, city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one four, Mr. Brown, would you read that by now?
City Council Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one four is a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Southern Sewer Equipment Sales for the city's leasing of one vac con, vacuum truck with a freightliner chassis at a maximum five-year lease price of four hundred two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Is there a motion that city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one four?
Mr. Mayor, I will approve the resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one four, second.
Got a motion on the second, Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Next, city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one eight, Mr. Brown, would you do that by now?
Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one eight is a resolution of the city of Lake City, Florida, adopting the code of core values for civility and ethics, providing for repeal of previous policies and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion that city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one eight?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to the adoption of resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one, second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Next, city council resolution twenty twenty one, the zero one nine, Mr. Brown, would you do that by now?
Twenty twenty one, I'm sorry, resolution twenty twenty one dash zero one nine is a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, ratifying the mayor's extension of the state of emergency arising from the COVID nineteen public health emergency.
Is there a motion that city council resolution twenty twenty one, the zero one nine?
Mr. Mayor, I will approve a resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one nine, second.
The motion and second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say that I received my second COVID shot on Friday, um, the second vaccination. And so I know that our county health department officials are, are working to uh, make sure that everyone in our county wants a vaccination, has an opportunity to receive that vaccination. So I just thank them for their work. I would encourage those citizens, if you're helpful and your time is available, uh, it it's a personal decision, but I would encourage you to uh, be vaccinated. Uh, if if that's something that works for you and your family, and I just, I want to thank those health officials that are doing that every day.
And I agree, I've had my second one, and I'll tell you what, I see a lot of news from other towns, probably said in line of, and our health department is organized, the volunteers, the people that work out there are friendly and honest. Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah. Next, city council resolution number twenty twenty one dash twenty three.
Resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty three is a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, appointing members to serve on the certification advisory committee, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion that city council resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty three?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion on city council resolution number twenty twenty one dash twenty three, second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah. Next, city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two four, uh, Mr. Brown, would you read that by now?
Twenty twenty one dash zero two four is a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing an application for the staffing to provide adequate fire and emergency response safer grant. Approving a contract with Firehouse Grants LLC to provide grant writing services at a base cost of six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Is there a motion that city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two four?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to the adoption of resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two four, second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill? Mayor?
Yeah. Uh, our fourteen is removed. Out of the fifteen, the city council resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two eight. Mr. Brown, would you do that?
Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two eight is a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the Lake City Police Department to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Flirter for Life, a one nonprofit corporation which operates and maintains the program known as Exploring Youth Protection Training.
Is there a motion that city council resolution twenty twenty one, the zero two eight?
Mr. Mayor, I will approve a resolution number twenty twenty one, dash zero twenty eight, second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Icree, follow me.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah. He uh, next, we're part of the, uh, February twenty eighth, uh, the uh, public statement workshop will be either on February twenty sixth or twenty third, uh, whichever you can make, uh, maybe the day of twenty second, uh, Monday, twenty third, Tuesday, uh, for the uh, public statement workshop.
Mr. Mayor, I'll suggest the twenty seventh.
I think twenty seven is fine with me.
Twenty second is fine with me.
Yes.
He did mention that the uh, city council members would have completed, brought along.
Right.
They don't have one, two councilperson, two employees, and a manager, and go along, and go to the two. They just can't accept it, but you know, that's that's why I'm talking, that's why I'm talking. And the council members, three, four.
It it's actually uh, next month is when I'm scheduled to, so uh, if if you wanted to delay the workshop until after everyone has an opportunity, that was the earliest opportunity that I had to bring along.
Okay, so we can, we can hold off for right now, we're ready out there.
Yeah, I've got to get the results, get through that. Uh, it was just called, that I haven't, what you do. I have a comment to count.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have some comments. Um, as we know, the county on Thursday is having a meeting, I think our staff's going to be there on behalf of the city to answer questions about utilities. And the county is reviewing the option of possibly inviting in a regional utility to possibly suck our water from North Florida out, which that's not what the county's intention is, however, when you have a spigot that can flow water in, it can also flow water out. And so I don't know if they didn't understand, but at the presentation that took place in this room, the GSG gentleman was very clear to that spigot could be opened either way. I think one of the things that's um, important for us to do is make sure we're moving forward in the right way to provide utilities needed for our city and for the growth we're going to need in our five mile radius that Florida statute section one eight, one oh two protects. There are several actions that we need to take. Uh, one thing I'm quite concerned about is where we are on the US forty seven seventy five interchange. Uh, we've talked and heard about it, here we are at the last meeting in February. I'm not sure where we are on the bid out process, but it is imperative that that bidding is started. Uh, we have to have a um, ribbon cutting, groundbreaking, what have you in April, I think that's crucial to the city. I don't think that's optional. In addition, I think it's important we hold the county close and we draw them in a strategic plan. They recently were denied their first attempt at a water use permit by um, Swan River Water Management, they were given some information on what they can do to make that work. I think there's some interesting developments in the um, wastewater plant that we have an agreement already in place to manage. And I think it's important that we engage them so they understand we are not allowing that to go. We're going to manage it as that agreement states, and we're planning on having water reused from that plant that we can use to increase our available water. I think it's imperative that we move forward in our whole water use permit and how we have to manage um, increasing the amount of flow available. I've heard people talk about what the cost is, I think the cost of not moving forward is deadly. We have a utility system that right now is putting nine hundred thousand or so roughly into the general fund. When we start doing deferred maintenance, if the county rings us in and they are the utility around us, we will not be able to afford to maintain our system without massive rate increases. I don't want to make people nervous, it's just a fact. You look at the age of the system, you look at the clay pipes at St. Mark's we've been working on, just in general, we have a lot of expenses coming down the road. Now, how you offset expenses by increasing revenue? If we increase the revenues properly by expanding where we sell these utilities, then it's going to help the freight costs on these old systems that we have in place. I think it's just crucial that we know moving forward what it is we want to accomplish and where we want the city to be financially long term. Do we want to be a city that's confined by an encircling county, or do we want to have the ability to grow, increase revenues, and provide benefits to our citizens? Um, in addition to that, it's important that we're continuing to focus on um, the annexation that we have going forward and stay aggressive on that. We must continue to annex, it grows the tax base, especially these commercial properties on ninety, which we're providing police service to, but yet which are in the county. I think it's crucial that we approach the county about its own resolution to bring those properties into the city. It's really unfair to have one neighbor in the city, one neighbor in the county, I think that's something we need to move forward and address rather rapidly. If the North Florida planning council can't do so, we need to move forward without them. That's all the comments I'm writing.
Thank you, Tom. Very important, we do need to be aggressive. If nothing else, can you read it, John?
Mayor?
Yeah.
I just want to confirm that you're not moving forward with the workshop? That other thing into a better mechanism, that correct?
Right.